I will now call the June 16, 2014 Blue Springs City Council Meeting ordered. If you will stand with me, observe a moment of silence and then I will lead you in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. Want to welcome you in attendance. And also, for those that can't be here, we no longer televise until we're into our newly renovated and expanded public safety building, but you can pick up the audio version of it. You can go to the city web and pick that up, and I do critique it the next morning. So I am actually going to the video, to the audio part of it. The next item is the consent agenda. Are there items that need to be pulled? If not, I would accept a motion for approval.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Quabell.
Aye.
Councilman Levsey.
Aye.
Councilman Fowler.
Aye.
Councilman Carter.
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson.
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper.
Aye.
Next, we have a discussion on the CDBG 2014-2015 Annual Action Plan. Mr. Allen.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is the last, I guess, public discussion before the annual action plan is being requested to go to public comment, 30-day public comment. Just wanted to bring up the list of proposed projects and programs that looking to be included in the 2014-2015 Annual Action Plan based on a few meetings here, discussions before you and the city council. And that's what we have before you this evening. Also included, a draft, again, it is just a draft at this point, of the annual action plan, which sets forth how the city will be implementing its five-year consolidated action plan, or consolidated plan, excuse me, through the annual action plan. So as you can see here, seven projects and programs have been identified, starting with kind of most to least in terms of funding in general sense. Baumgartner Park Tennis Courts, 35 percent of the total projected allotment, excuse me. Minor Home Repair Program, which is also going quite well, $60,000. We actually increased that a little bit to help make up for some of the backlog, as it were, waiting lists for a number of folks who are looking to participate in that program. First-time home buyers program is also progressing well. We have, I believe, two left, one, down to one, one left to issue this current program year. So that looks at up to $3,000 in kind of closing costs or down payment costs for first-time home buyers in the city. So we've allotted 12 of the 13 for that program this year. Downtown Facade Grant Program, this is a little bit lower than we had proposed for the current year, based on the fact that we do have some additional interests from other program services. And that would be Downtown Alive, Community Services League, and now Hope House. You did hear from Community Services League at their last, at the last city council meeting, and I believe we'll be hearing from representatives from Hope House later this evening. So again, this is a draft, and this is what staff has put together based on input, comments through this meeting and others. And again, closing here, just administrative funds. We only average around 2% to 3% of the total, so that's what you see there. I should note that it's no more than 15 percent of the total allocation can be allotted to program services. Is that the right term? Public services, excuse me. Yes, there we go. Public services, and that would include Downtown Alive, Community Services League, and Hope House. So that's why you see the amounts up there. Again, 4%, 5%, and 5%. Not quite, you know, again, rounding gives you close to that 15 percent maximum. So that's why they have the numbers before you this evening as such. So again, staff is asking for any additional comments or edits before we publish the draft. The timeline is to publish that beginning next Monday, June 23rd, and then 30-day period ending July 23rd. And that allows time to incorporate any comments during that public notice period before it comes back to the mayor and city council here on the August 4th meeting. Then that needs to be forwarded to HUD before the August 15th deadline. So that's kind of the long and the short of it, and certainly open for any questions or comments.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilman Carter, then Councilman Levsey.
Mr. Allen, I'm just curious if there's a way for us to see what other cities our size are doing with CDBG funds as a way to maybe expand our thinking. I mean, I like this list, but just maybe in future years to see how other cities use those funds.
Sure. Mike, if you have an opportunity, I know Lee's Summit, we are allotted to look at them as a representative sample, but again...
Is that not a public record?
Oh, yes. Yes, certainly. Again, Lee's Summit, I do believe they give, they have a lot smaller grants that they give, several of those to public services. But again, they're in a different timeframe. They started several years before we did. Independence gets a lot more funding. They also have home funds, which is a entirely different source of funds above and beyond CDBG. But yeah, we can certainly take a look and see what other, other cities are doing.
We are very similar to what other people do. A lot of people do less. They just do like a one public project, kind of like what we did with our sidewalk programs at the beginning. But it just varies depending on the needs of their community.
Councilman Levsey.
Yeah, Your Honor, this may be a question for you as well. I assume that Hope House is going to be doing some comments at the end in the...
Yes.
And I wonder if it would be out of place to maybe incorporate them into this discussion, only because this is the first opportunity we've had. And I do have some question or maybe concern about this shift we've had towards the public services, just because traditionally we have, we have used these CDBG funds for infrastructure, and they're now kind of seems to be with this year, a more of a shift towards the public services, which I, I support the mission of all of these organizations that we've talked about. But I think if we're going to make that shift, there maybe needs to be some discussion on the council level as far as what maybe be the criteria for starting to incorporate this, because I can know of at least a couple organizations that have approached me about CDBG funds. And I think the last council meeting, my question was answered, was whether they actually had to be physically located within the, the district. And, and the benefit for CSL and Downtown Alive is that they are, but I don't know that Hope House necessarily has a physical location in that vicinity. And so, again, I fully support their mission and would like to support their cause, but I don't know that if we're going to take this avenue, we maybe need to set some sort of policy as we have in the past with the Downtown Review Board and some of those funds. So we are being equitable to the many organizations in our community that could be benefited from these, these funds. So I, I don't know where that discussion to go yet, because again, this is just the first opportunity we've really had to, to vet these different public organizations.
You know, we were going to wait until the visitor's section, but we certainly can bring Mary Ann up and have her make her presentation now. Yeah, yeah, why don't, why don't we do that, and that'd give you an opportunity to listen and maybe ask those questions.
Sure.
You know, I'm thinking that, you know, as, as we set up the minor home repair program as, as well as the first-time home buyers program, we certainly put some limits, because I think what you will do is open the floodgates and you will have a number. So we do need to probably establish some criteria and set some guidelines that staff can follow, so.
Okay. Well, thank you for the opportunity to be here. I'm Mary Ann Matheny, and I am the CEO at Hope House. We have been in existence for 31 years. I think most people know us because of our two emergency shelter locations, which I think goes back to your statement. We have two locations, one's in, one is in Independence, one is in Lee's Summit. We house 122 people between both locations every night. But we do have an outreach office here. We have had an outreach office in Blue Springs for over 20 years that we have, it's moved. We had been in a church, and we are now renting office space from a local business. We don't publicize that address. We don't advertise it. We don't put signs out because of what we do, providing services to victims of domestic violence. We don't want perpetrators or abusers coming to that location. So we do have an outreach office here where we provide individual and group counseling, which is what our request for CDBG would be for from, from the Blue Springs City Council. We also provide hospital advocacy, so we are housed, we provide services out at St. Mary's, and we are also partnering with the police department and the court. So we have a court advocate who is housed here. She offices out of our outreach office and works with, very closely with the court program as well as the police department through the Office of Violence Against Women. We have been very fortunate to partner with the city of Blue Springs since 2003 in a very formal partnership, receiving grant funding through what's called the Arrest Grant Program. And that is where we, there's a dedicated detective that works on the, just on our cases, and then we have a dedicated court advocate as well. So we have been providing services in Blue Springs for well over 20 years, starting with the outreach program. We're very, very fortunate to work with Chief McCoy and the, starting the lethality assessment program back in 2012, where, working with the police and identifying victims who are at high risk for being killed if they stay in that relationship. And that has been extremely successful out here in Blue Springs. We've had great success in reaching people that we had never been able to reach before to offer services, so. And I think I talked about the hospital program. We've been doing that since 2002 out here in Blue Springs as well. So I don't know if that answers your question. Our request to you is to help fund the therapy program that we do here. It's individual therapy, group therapy, and then we do provide childcare during the group time as well. So our request is to help fund that for the, the program that's out here in Blue Springs.
Okay. Are there any other questions? So did she answer your questions, Councilman?
Yes, absolutely, and I appreciate that. I, and I don't want my comments to be taken in any way detrimental.
Not at all. I totally understand.
And I've toured the Independence Hope House, and I think it's just important to establish there is a Blue Springs presence, especially before passing this next, this agenda item, which is the draft.
Right.
Just to, and also addressing just kind of the discussion that we need to establish, some sort of parameters when we're using these, this funds to support public service organizations. But yes, I completely endorse and support the, the mission of Hope House. I'm glad to have them in our community.
Thank you. And you bring up a very good point. I think most people think of us as a shelter, and we are much more than a shelter. We serve many, many more people outside of shelter every year than we do. We're very fortunate to be supported by the court cost that the city has passed and, and then to receive this Violence Against Women funding as well to help us to really enhance the program that we offer here. So no offense, I appreciate it, and it's very common that people, again, because we don't advertise and we don't have a sign out, people don't necessarily know that we're here. And, and that's okay in some respects, because it keeps the, the client safe, but doesn't really necessarily lend itself to the public knowing what all we're providing out here in Blue Springs. What I've provided for you is more detailed information. There's more statistics, some that are specifically for Blue Springs and what we've done for residents through the different programs, and goes into a little bit more detail about the partnership that we have with the Violence Against Women grant that we have.
Any other questions? CNN, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Councilman Edmondson?
Not for Mary Ann, though.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. You have a question of somebody else?
Mr. Allen, please.
Okay.
I would assume that, I know on our report, page five, I believe it is, you indicate public notice comment period was from late June through July. Are we going to have these comments both from Hope House and CSL? Will they be in that draft or not? Because technically, that's public comment.
Absolutely. Yes, we will take the minutes from this meeting, and they'll be part of that.
Okay.
For the comment period, usually it's people who read or write letters or give phone calls.
Okay.
We can absolutely put these comments into our comment section, but they're already there as part of our minutes, as part of the required submittal of our meetings.
Okay.
And also, one thing to notice that, you know, we're just asking tonight to publish the draft for comments. So, you know, if there are any more comments, we definitely will take those and consider those, and we can actually discuss those on the August 4th meeting, and we can still make changes at that time before we actually submit it to HUD on the 15th.
Well, just, it kind of acts, if you read through this, it acts like there hasn't been any, like it hasn't gotten any kind of attention whatsoever, and, but yet, we have been getting attention, so.
Right. And really, that, the public comment page in the actual draft is for the public comment period. So anything we discuss here is, is actually in as a part of an appendix.
It's more of a generic placeholder for now.
Okay.
Yep.
Plus, anything discussed here is part of the minutes, too, of our meeting, which would be part of it, too.
Technically, this was a visitor's section. The last time was kind of a visitor's section, so I really, that's not on our agenda per se.
Right.
So that's why I just want to make sure that that was included in.
Very good point. We can certainly include the letters and all the information that's been provided from these different groups as part of the action plan.
Yeah, to clarify, I think you said relative to the money that we're spending for Hope House or et cetera, that is limited to 15 percent of the total?
Yes.
And that's a HUD program requirement?
Yes, correct.
Okay. I guess relative to the criteria of what, of how we would distribute that, I mean, I like the Hope, the Hope House, Community Services League, Minor Home Repair Program, the First-Time Buyer's Home Program, every one of those, I can see that direct connect to, you know, the folks that need this relative to their income. And that, that's, to me, is why HUD gives us the money, is to help get it back, back into that economic bracket. So, you know, some of these other ones that, that are there to subsidize business, profit-making business, I'm just not, those are going to go lower on my priority.
Sure. And those have been reduced in this, again, like the Downtown Facade Grant Program. We had $15,000 this year, looking at just $10,000 this coming year. There are a few interested parties who've approached us to utilize some of that funding. It's not been, like, processed at this point. But exactly, that's why you see, like, Minor Home Repair Program has increased, and then again, these, these two new services being included here as well, so.
And what else? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Allen.
Thank you.
That brings us to the adoption of the resolution, grant and approval to publish the draft. Need a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call in favor, aye?
Aye.
Hold same sign. Next, we have a presentation on the comprehensive plan. Ms. Allen, you still up?
As you know, it's been, I guess, maybe a little bit longer than we had first expected, but quite a bit of good dialogue, discussion, and work has been put in by our steering committee, comprehensive plan steering committee, made up primarily of planning commission and city council members. They've been meeting approximately once a month, at times more than that, over the last 12 to 18 months in total. We've had several public input meetings along the way, and we are now at the point of moving forward with a final draft and hopefully adoption at the planning commission meeting next Monday. Again, pending any input, comments, and feedback that we may receive from you tonight. But with us is our lead project manager from Gould Evans, and that is Chris Brewster. And I'll turn it over to Chris to kind of walk through the full outline essentially of the comprehensive plan in its updated form.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, for having us here, and we've been very excited to work on this project and with the steering committee and staff and community in particular. I'm going to, for a lot of you, this will be familiar ground, so we'll be going over things you've already seen and worked on. But for those of you that haven't been as involved in the process, I'm going to give you the highlights. Hopefully, you've seen the document and had a chance to look at it, and if you have any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer that either tonight or if you hear the presentation and think about it this week as well, be more than happy to answer any questions. So basically, an overview of how the plan is organized. When we first started this off through our public visioning sessions last spring, and then we also had some detailed planning workshops last fall, we were in information gathering mode. And one of the things we talked about with staff is we wanted, they wanted this to be a, a different type of plan, one that is sort of easy to use, easy to read, but still provides some of the technical tools that they all need and you all need to make effective long-range planning and land use decisions and development decisions. So this was the structure we came up with, was to really to make the plan document more of sort of an executive summary that gives people a flavor for, for what the plan is about, and then leave some of the more technical things in the appendices. So that's the structure you see here. So the section one, well, first of all, introducing the plan, we felt it was necessary to enter, because it is a different type of plan, to introduce that. So that's how, what we, we do right off the bat. And then section one is, did you know? Some of the, instead of an existing conditions, we wanted to give some of the big-picture facts that were shaping the direction of this plan, some of the things we, we knew from our analysis of trends in the region, some of the things that came from looking at the existing conditions and data of this, of the city that staff provided, and some of the things we heard from our visioning sessions from, from the community at large as well. And then, so that, that's what that first section is. It sort of gives the, the big picture direction of things that were on the community's mind. From that, we wanted to say, to develop the major themes. What's shaping the direction of this plan, and what are some of the things that people are talking about for, for the future of their community? So that's section two. And then section three is the vision that comes from that. What do all those themes add up to? And then the last section, the frameworks, are how all of that comes together and how we, we impact long-range planning decisions. So again, the introduction, we ended that section with, this is a different way to think about the city, and we think that's very important, mainly because some of the things we heard in, in the, in the public process. So we knew that we wanted this to be not just about planning for land use, but planning for places. One of the very first things we heard with our steering committee was that most people came to Blue Springs because of the neighborhoods, and how do you identify with your neighborhood? What do, what, what do you look for in a neighborhood? There weren't always easy go-to answers on that question, so, but we did know that we wanted to be planning around neighborhoods as the fundamental planning unit. And what that left for us was the challenge of your corridors in between. So the idea was, let's strengthen places first and not just jump to land uses immediately. And the, the second major part of our approach was this idea of setting up a planning system, something that allows you to keep continually planning and readdressing some of the issues and ideas that we've raised in this plan in different ways in different parts of the city, but all keeping it within the large-scale framework of, of the direction of the plan. And then lastly, being incremental and strategic. Cities all over lately are, are strapped with resources, and large silver bullet projects aren't going to be what strengthens our cities. It's the small, day-to-day little things that, that will do so. But doing so within the picture of a, a long-range and, and big-picture plan is important still. So some of the highlights of the, the did you know, probably one that's not so surprising was the demographic changes facing the community. Long, a community built on school districts and families, still is that, and that population is still growing, but it's growing so at a, at a far lesser rate than it has in the past. So the actual increment of your community that's growing more is the aging population, and, and that's common to trends all around the region. Transportation cost is something that's, that's impacting a lot of communities, particularly suburban communities that have a large driving population. So when you combine housing affordability, but then layer on transportation costs, it paints a little bit different picture of your community on affordability. So that was something that we were talking about. The makeup of your population between daytime and evening, we had a long discussion with the steering committee about, are we a bedroom community? Will we continue to be that? Is that good? Is that bad? And that led to the whole idea of drawing more jobs into the community, which, which you've been working on prior to this plan as well. The regional assets was one that really came out of the visioning discussions when we talked to people about the community. There were quite a number of the general population that really don't identify that as a major asset of your community. And to us, kind of looking at it, you know, familiar with the region, obviously, but not familiar with the details of your community, that was pretty surprising to us, the access you have to amenities both within your city and immediately surrounding your city is pretty substantial. And so we talked about that with the steering committee, is that being your differentiator? You are in competition with other suburban communities that also have great neighborhoods and good school districts. So what is going to be your differentiator? And that was the thing that the steering committee gravitated to. So all of those things led to the five big themes, sort of the organizing elements around this plan. The LINK is an acronym for Locally Integrated Natural Connections, and that idea of connecting all of those assets, Fleming Park, Borough Woods, the Little Blue Trace outside of your city, Monkey Mountain area outside of your city, Landell Park up, up north outside of the city limits. All of those things present a really, and even more to the south, present a really strong framework. And so the idea of drawing those more into the community was a substantial theme. We, we heard back a lot about what is the image of a city, and so it seemed like that was something to, to build upon. Again, back to the discussion of neighborhoods, the idea of them being sort of the, the social center of life in Blue Springs, whether it's the school district that people gather around at the neighborhood, or a church, or whether, you probably don't have as many of these now, but small commercial establishments. We did hear a lot of discussion about the Waffle House, is that on, on the western side of the community? So examples of, like, businesses where people go to gather and, and hear the news of the day. Strengthening those within and adjacent to neighborhoods was this idea of neighborhoods plus gathering places. And they can be any variety of land uses, as long as they're becoming that sort of social focal point for the neighborhoods, existing neighborhoods and new neighborhoods as you grow to the south. A great place to grow businesses, the idea of diversifying the economic development strategy. We've met a lot with the EDC and tried to get a feel for some of the things they're working on, from both the large-scale things that are happening at the Innovation Park, as well as not forgetting the smaller businesses and really diversifying our approach, particularly as it relates to the last theme on there of breathing new life into old corridors. Those areas are a substantial challenge from a land use perspective. And so the, the steering committee discussed a lot, the idea of really being open for business and repurposing a lot of the retail uses that, that may not come back as retail, and existing buildings, and being very flexible to growing new businesses in those places is a major theme. And then the last one there, to jump back up, is reestablishing, we revisited some of the ideas in the downtown master plan from several years ago and, and verified a lot of those things that, yes, we do want to keep, continue to work on downtown to be that, that heart of the community. The, the neighborhoods and gathering places are a smaller version, and then the downtown is that heart for the community at large. And so the vision there then is based upon the four, four frameworks, places, city image, connections, and investment. Again, we didn't want this plan to be just a, a jump to land use at a city-wide scale. All four of those things are going to go into how development occurs in the future, again, incrementally or large-scale. So the plan is organized around those, those frameworks that identify and, and really are meant to kind of coordinate thinking of various entities that are going to contribute to development in the future, so that no one, so it doesn't simply become a transportation plan, or it simply doesn't become a land use plan, but it's all of those things bundled up. So each of those framework elements has a little bit of each discipline in it. There's land use, there's economic development, there's urban design, and there's transportation in, in all of those. And so the, the last major part of how the plan is set up and the thinking behind it was that we wanted to start to put the analysis and influence of what goes into decisions at the right scale. Planners have been particularly guilty in the past of kind of using the same tools at the same scale. And so what we wanted to do is, at the, at the framework scale on the far left, to be thinking more in terms of concepts and places and how things should relate on a city-wide scale. And then the idea of staff wanting to continue... And then the idea of staff wanting to continue to do planning under this plan through specific plans. And so that's that middle scale where we can really dive down into an area and make more accurate and reasoned decisions based on the transportation networks that are there or going to be constructed, based on the natural resources, or based on how land uses might relate to each other on a specific parcel basis, sort of that lens that you don't get when you're looking at a city-wide scale. And then lastly, that the whole idea that this needs to lead to development projects, whether it's redevelopment or new growth development, being the more detailed scale and specific scale on the far right. So just some quick highlights of the appendices where we do get into some of the more technical tools that staff will use to help make decisions and recommendations to you all. The citywide policy maps, the first one is land use, and we base that off of, I think it's six types of places. The neighborhoods being the yellow background that is, again, the framework for this whole plan. And then the idea of neighborhood centers are the smaller red dots that would pop up. So that's really one of the other things that we heard through the visioning process was particularly on growth to the south, we don't want what's happened to seven in the north part of the city to happen to the south. We need to be proactive to make sure that we don't just develop in a strip corridor fashion based on the traffic counts and end up with retail that begins competing against itself. So the idea of consolidating them more into centers is the major element, the major influence that this plan seeks to shape. Distinct destinations, those things that are totally unique within the city or within the region, so downtown being one of them, Adams Dairy Landing being another industrial area up to the north, and then reserving a future one down to the south at Colburn and Seven in that vicinity. And those, that stands for the idea of things that are really, they deserve almost a land use policy on their own because of the scale of them and to not just call them commercial, but that they're going to really be a distinct destination. The fourth element that was important was the idea of business hubs. It's sort of comparable to the neighborhood centers, but this idea that if we're going to be growing businesses of all different scales, do we focus, can we focus them in certain locations where a number of different businesses can kind of play off of each other and not just in a, be connected not just in a networking sense, but actually be connected in a physical sense? And that might be something to stimulate new development in these corridors and to be open to those ideas. And then the last part is that remaining part of the corridor reinvestment area, which is sort of the most general area that you have that we didn't want to go through and identify those as purely commercial, but those should really be a mixture of uses that support those centers or business hubs that pop up along the corridors. From those framework maps, then the idea is that the specific plans we go through and create a more defined land use map using the land use categories that you have in your current comprehensive plan and as well as new ones that weren't in the plan. So the, we did three of the areas, the north area at the top, central area in the middle, and then the south growth area on the bottom there. The second citywide framework is the transportation map, a similar theme that on, at the citywide scale, we're talking about how the system works and how the network functions from a functional class, from highway corridors to major arterials, minor arterials, to the local networks that don't appear at that scale on the map. And then the idea is that this, at this specific plan level, we can get into how do those streets support the places more with an urban design overlay, if you will, on the function of that street? So a good example that came up in our planning workshops was up north with Pink Hill Road and Duncan as well. A lot of the people in that community said, well, it's a very different road to the west of Seven than it is to the east of Seven. And so on a citywide scale map, it might show as a, I believe it's a major collector, I might have it wrong. But the idea is that it changes based on how it's relating to land use. So the idea would be that at the specific plan level, you can address some of those decisions better and sort of give you a menu of options of different street design types to consider as you continue to further planning of your transportation network. And again, the idea of really making that decision in coordination with land uses as The last citywide policy map is based off of that idea of the natural amenities in your community and around it being a major structural element for your urban design. And so this is the Mark Natural Resource Inventory Map, which is a free resource that they've unrolled in the last year, and it has incredible amounts of data for both cities and the development community at all different types of scales. And this map shows a citywide one, but you can actually mine down to the, to a parcel level where they'll actually show some of the natural resources on that site. And so we thought that was a really useful tool that kind of aligned into, you know, as more specific planning is happening and as development occurs, if you really want to strengthen these natural assets and draw them into the community and into development so that they can actually work for development to use that, to help shape decisions, the more specific you get. And it's ideally set up for this planning system because that is the way they started to parse the data on natural resources as well, getting more refined information at more specific scales. And so the whole idea is that we're going to leave you with this system with three of the specific plans done, but more to be done as well. But also with the idea that even without doing the specific plan, the framework maps do have a lot of guidance on what can, how to make decisions absent a specific plan. So we were very cognizant of the idea that there may be areas you don't get to right away, or you don't get to at all if they don't warrant a specific plan, but that that general citywide framework should give staff enough to make good decisions based on land use, transportation, urban design, and infrastructure investments. And then each of the ones that we've done so far is based on two elements, with a public realm relating to the private realm. So we have a community character plan that deals with the street types, open space networks, and those types of things that are public realm. And then in response to that, we do the detailed land use and development plan that tries to take those places and give them a little more refined scale as to what types of land use go into making up those places. And we have criteria on, you know, a neighborhood center, for example, usually has between certain percentages of commercial, retail, residential, and office. So those are the, that's the criteria I was referring to before, that staff has absent one of these specific plans, and this is just an example of one of them applied. We also called out some of the areas in the development plan for more refined concepts. So an example would be that the, in the lower left of that land use and development plan is one of the neighborhood centers. And so we went into, you know, a conceptual view of how those land uses would develop into that place. And again, it's not the official policy guiding it, but it just gives the development community and decision-makers an idea of how things are supposed to relate, a little better than just a simple land use plan would do. And here's the same example for the central area. And then we also did, completed the south area. The south area was interesting because it was done at a far greater scale, obviously because we had a much bigger area, so it wasn't quite a one-for-one fit, as some of the analysis that was going on in the north and central area. But the concept still worked and helped us make a little more informed decisions than had we been just doing a citywide land use map. Those are the highlights, and again, a lot of thinking of all of you around here and others that aren't here went into this, so we're excited about the plan and we were excited that it's something different, but we think it's also something that is going to give staff some pretty good decision-making tools and a way to continue to do real planning is one of the first concepts we heard from when this project kicked off.
Is there any questions, comments? Councilman Carter?
First of all, I think you did a great job, and I appreciate it being part of the committee that did this. This document, as opposed to the old one, my impression of the old comprehensive plan was that it was a series of you can't do this, you can't do that, and if you want to do anything different, you're going to have to go to the planning commission and you're going to have to get it through that way. And the planning commission was amending and working with people as they could. This plan is warm, it's welcoming, it's, these are the things you can do. It's more proactive, in my view, and it did give the development community some flexibility. So I think it's a wonderful plan, and I urge endorsement of it.
Thank you, Councilman Carter. Any other comments from council? Seeing none?
Your Honor?
Oh, Councilman Culpepper?
I just want to say that overall, I think it's a good plan. My only concern is the subjectivity. And if you have a developer come into the community, you know, what kind of guidelines are we giving them where, you know, you go to the planning commission or come to the council, and how subjective are those decisions?
Yeah, that's a great question because it is a different type of plan. My view is it's probably a little less subjective than perhaps even your existing plan, because one of the things we were careful to do is to not make assumptions on land uses at such a general scale that we were guaranteed to be wrong. And that's where I think you get into the scenario that Councilman Carter mentioned, that when you are wrong, then you have to go back and amend the plan. So we wanted to toe that balance of giving guidance to make good decisions that are flexible, but also have it be strong enough that you do have something to say, no, that's not what our plan was intending. So we think we've gotten there with some, if you look in detail at the, particularly the future, the citywide land use policy appendix, there's some very, the tables get quite specific on how different land uses are supposed to relate. And so it is really reliant on doing that analysis of the area when applications come in, or doing that analysis on a specific plan to say, are we within those parameters or not? And I think that's where you're going to get the, enough information to make an effective decision that's rational, but also enough flexibility to say, you know, do, is this something that's going to contribute to the larger picture? That's really the balance we wanted to strike, rather than to just say, well, yeah, commercial's okay here and office is okay here, trying to tie it back to the larger picture. So I think we have gotten there. Well, I've talked to Jim and Scott about that, and if we haven't, we need to, because that's what it's really going to come down to, is as they're reviewing applications, you know, we've walked through several scenarios of what would happen if you get an application like this. So those are the types of things we want to leave you all with.
Yeah, we don't want to get ourselves into a situation where maybe the planning commission says no, and the developer said, well, here's your plan, and there's nothing in here that tells me I cannot do this.
Yeah.
You know, and so I want to make sure that we are, we are all on the same page with that stuff.
Yeah, and the other, I think most of you know, the other thing we are working on is updating the Unified Development Ordinance to implement this plan. So there are some changes we're making specifically to address that, to give people options, but options that are more consistent with the direction of this plan. So the idea should be, if it's not consistent, they'll have a hard time finding something in the Unified Development Code that would support it. And then that plan can really, you know, the plan's really only supposed to serve as a guide, so that's where we want to leave you with.
All right, thank you.
Councilman Carter?
Yeah, I think, Councilman Culpepper, the point you make that I saw in the plan as was unveiled to me, it's like as you look into the specifics of it in each area, it's like, here's kind of what we want to see in this area, okay? And then these are the levels within that area that you have to choose from, almost like a cafeteria list within that area along the lines of what we want. It can't be something completely out of bounds, but, you know, there are criteria in there.
Yeah, as long as it's not too terribly subjective. And that was my only concern, because we don't need somebody coming to the city and saying, well, we're going to sue you because your plan said we can do this, and now you're saying you don't like it. So we need to make sure we have that taken care of.
Any other comments? Seeing none, thank you for that presentation. Next, we have introduction reading of Bill forty-three nineteen. Do I like to introduce it?
I introduce, Your Honor.
Okay.
First reading of Bill number forty-three nineteen, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding section two-two-zero-seven-nine-zero to make it unlawful to invade the privacy of another.
Your motion?
Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill number forty-three nineteen, an ordinance amending the Code of Ordinances, City of Blue Springs, Missouri, by adding section two-two-zero-seven-nine-zero to make it unlawful to invade the privacy of another.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-four ninety-three.
Next, we have introduction reading of Bill forty-three twenty.
I introduce, Your Honor. First reading of Bill number forty-three twenty, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or city administrator of the City of Blue Springs to enter into an amendment to the forty-and-seven TIF agreement for Project Area B. Move the bill be approved on its first reading and proceed with the second?
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All the same sign?
Second reading of Bill number forty-three twenty, an ordinance authorizing the mayor or city administrator of the City of Blue Springs to enter into an amendment to the forty-and-seven TIF agreement for Project Area B.
Move the bill be approved on its second reading and assign the appropriate ordinance number.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Carried unanimously, given ordinance number forty-four ninety-four.
That brings us to Merrill announcements. We will have the Fourth of July before we meet again, so we want to ask people to be safe and responsible during that time period. And I'm going to also recognize someone, this is in the audience tonight. We have Mr. Louis Jones, who is chairman of our Human Relations Commission, and some of you probably haven't had a chance to meet him. So would you just kind of stand so they can see who are, Mr. Jones?
Hello, everyone.
All right, thank you so much for coming. That brings me to Faustipanda. I don't have an Arthur for tonight, but it says, "To steal ideals from one person is plagiarism; to steal from many is research." End quote. I don't have any visitors' appearance forms since Ms. Mary Ann came up and gave her presentation while we talked about CDBGs. So we're going to have a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel matters and real estate matters.
So moved.
Okay?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilman Edmondson?
Aye.
Councilman Culpepper?
Aye.
Councilman Quabell?
Aye.
Councilman Levsey?
Aye.
Councilman Fowler?
Aye.
Councilman Carter?
Aye.
We're going to allow our visitors to be excused, and we will go into executive session in about two to three minutes.